Good evening. This is the August 12, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. And we'll start with our call to order.
All right, Stiles, here.
Here.
Zaremsky.
Here.
DePaul Leonard.
Here.
Osterholm.
Here.
Also present is Planning and Economic Development Director, Meg Leatherman. And we have, at the back of the room, Planning and Economic Development Coordinator, Erin Aron.
Great, thank you. Okay, reviewing the agenda, any changes needed? We don't have a whole lot on our agenda this time, so that's nice. Okay, then let's review our minutes. Does anyone have any changes? Their minutes were pretty lengthy. I guess they weren't that lengthy, but any changes? Okay, I move approval of the minutes.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll move on then to communications. And it looks like we don't have any general communications. So we're into the council and committee reports. Gary, do you have anything from active transportation?
No, there'll be a meeting tomorrow, so there'll be an update our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Gavin, do you have anything from council?
I don't. We had a very light meeting last time, and therefore, no.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, this is a time in our agenda where we have citizens' comments. Anyone who wants to make a comment, feel free to come forward and make it. Only one, and I guess we can't force you to come forward and make any comments. So we'll skin that. And we don't have any public hearings. We do not have old business. So we will go to our new business, which is a discussion of possible text amendments to the transient guest lodging regulations. And who should start with that? Meg?
Yeah, I, one of the Planning Commission's goals for 2025 was to review the transit guest lodging zoning code, do some research, and we decided to dedicate Gary and Stephen to do that work. And Gary went ahead and reached out to several different municipalities and villages. And I think he did some research and also talked to some of them about what regulations they have in place, if any, and put together a spreadsheet that you guys have all in the packet. I think you guys are pretty familiar with the code, so I didn't plan on going over that in much detail, but happy to answer questions that come up along the way. And I think Gary can do a really good job summarizing the information he found. The, I guess, the end kind of goal, I think, from the discussion would be to decide if we do want to make any changes to the current code that we have in place, which, in effect, basically limits the number of transit guest lodging units that can occur in the village. Gary has a suggested change, but I think it's fair, if anyone else also has any thoughts on it too, beyond that, it's good to talk about tonight, too.
Okay, Gary, would you like to talk about your findings?
The background, the way I look at it is, for quite a while, there's been discussion in the community about TGLs. Some people think the requirements are too lax, some people think they're too strict, some people think we have too many, some people we think we don't have enough. And we thought it'd be a good idea to collect a little data. So basically, I'm just going to go through these spreadsheet notes. I won't read them verbatim, but want to highlight some stuff. And then I might point some things out on the table. So, thanks to Meg's input, because I certainly wouldn't have been able to find this stuff. Basically, everything that controls TGLs are in two documents. I've identified them there. What I did, then what I did is, I contacted a number of communities, and I did a variety. I wanted a couple. I mostly wanted communities that were somewhat similar to Yellow Springs in some manner. But I also, I picked a couple that are local. And you can see I had a half a dozen others that, in particular, had some degree of tourism pressure, I thought was pertinent. There's some other communities I contacted, but I wasn't able to get very far with them. But these, this group, I got good data from. The key item, and this is without going through the table, is that we, Yellow Springs does have a relatively large number of TGLs, as well as we have, I'm going to call them, unique controls. In fact, most of the communities I talked to were intrigued by the controls we had. And they pumped me for more, as much information as I was pumping from them, in terms of what we had. In fact, what was also interesting is many of the communities had no controls whatsoever up until a year or so before ago. It's new, people just, you know, they're renting out stuff, and only recently that communities are beginning to realize they got to regulate it. So we have unique controls, and as I noted here, the key feature of our controls designed to minimize, minimize the removal of housing available for residents and to avoid clustering TGLs too close to one another. That's sort of the house, the hardwood, a regulation does. It's done by restrictions, mostly on location, which sort of indirectly affects density. Okay, I'll skip that fifth point, because that's sort of the one thing that I come up with to consider, and I wrote a couple other points. I want to point out, the Ohio Revised Code comes into play. Particular chapter defines numerous requirements for lodging. And it's like, oh, there's all sorts of lodging out there. There's, you know, in addition, for lodging, you have bed and breakfast, you have hotels, you have boarding houses, TGLs, boarding rooms in addition to boarding houses. And they all have different controls, they all have different requirements, they all have different restrictions. It's all driven by the Ohio Revised Code. They also all have various requirements for various inspections and things like that. Because you're, it's lodging, it's all lodging. And then the one other thing that I wanted to mention, that, you know, there has been some discussion lately, if, that I wanted to point out. So within the, on the table, I identified 40, I'm told it might be 39 actually now. Of the 40-ish TGLs that we have, five of them are full houses, and they're relics, they're grandfathered in from before this regulation. The remaining 35 are all, they're carve-outs of houses. They're either basement garages.
Accessory dwellings.
Accessory dwellings, or portions of houses, and of existing houses. And none of them have separate addresses. They're all part of the main house. They're all required to be tied in with the electrical, the water, the sewer, the gas, and everything. They're not independent units. So pretty much in most cases, there'd be, I don't want to say challenges, but there'd be a variety, if an owner wanted to make a TGL sort of a permanent unit or subunit, they'd have to do some stuff to make that happen, that may or may not be easy enough to do.
And you're talking, when you say permanent, you're talking about if they wanted to rent it out as a regular.
As a regular.
And not a transient guest lodging.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the whole thing with transient guest lodge is, it's actually like hotels, that you have temporary residence, hotels, it's often one or two days. But the Ohio Revised Code has all these definitions. It's, and we mirror it in our zoning. Zoning is basically, I think it's roughly 30 days or less than your, your temporary. If, if you rent out space for periods of more, 35, 40, 50 days, you could have a string of rentals that, if they're all that long, they're not considered temporary. They're not considered temporary, they're, they're not, the definition of temporary is a shorter unit. Anyway, going to the, I'm going to jump to the table. So basically, I did a couple, local communities, southwest Ohio, Xenian Beaver Creek, just because they're sort of nearby, they're a bit, a bit larger of towns, and they don't have any spacing restrictions. You know, the one thing I want to mention is, is we have unique spacing restriction, and the whole thing about full house TGLs, we're the only community, at least that I polled, that, that doesn't allow it, except for the grandfathered ones. And what we also do is, is the few that we have, there's a large fee, we charge them every year, that goes into a fund for, is that an affordable housing fund or something? Yeah, so we collect money from them for that purpose. So we got us and two others in the southwest, there's three in the central part of Ohio, that all of them are, have some sort of pressure, they have colleges nearby, or growth nearby, or one thing or another. And some of them, only very few have spacing restrictions. And then I have only one from southeast Ohio. I didn't get any luck with any better, and that was Nelsonville. And they've got a bit of pressure. And then northeast Ohio, I picked a couple communities that I'm familiar with. Peninsula is smaller than I thought it was, but it's completely surrounded by park. What's also very interesting, Chagrin Falls is rather upscale, and they have, you know, a number of, of units. And in every one of these, so many of these towns, there's issues, because they don't control the spacing to a great degree. They have, what we have tried to do, they have units that are clustered together. The, the whole point of the 500-foot restriction is you don't want a block with three of them on the same block.
And you're saying they said that they had issues?
Yeah, yeah, that there's concerns in the community above it.
What, I mean, what, were there more specifically than just issues? What did they feel the issues were?
It tends to be noise and just regular permanent residents. They didn't, they just didn't like the flow of so many people in and out, they didn't know who they were. The other thing that some communities have, which is sort of interesting, communities, this is like Nelsonville was like this, that it's semi-rural, like us, but it's more semi-rural. And the number they gave me is what they think is the number.
Oh, they're not sure.
There's all sorts of others out there, but they haven't tracked them down yet. And what people do, and this is actually a broader issue that I learned about, I went to training earlier this year in Green County, and they talked about this. People will build an outbuilding, and, you know, there's, there's minimal regulation to just build an outbuilding, and then on the sly, they'll go run electric and plumbing and whatever, and they'll create a, a.
Accessory dwelling.
Housing unit out of it, outside of community controls. So some of these towns, like Nelsonville in particular, think they have a lot of that going on. They also, they're right outside of Athens and OU, so they have a somewhat, a partially transient population with students in and out, and.
Any of these other towns have the requirement that we do, that you have to, that the owners, or I guess in some cases, the representative of the owner have to be on the site?
You can tell.
In your chart, you have, I think, five that don't have.
Yeah, so non-owner occupied.
Yeah, yeah. I, well, no, I.
You said, you did a certificate fee for owner occupied versus, so they must qualify it, they must regulate it if they're having a fee for it, I would think.
But the five in the middle, there's no fee for anything. It doesn't mean they don't allow it. I think, and I actually didn't put it in this chart, that I think all these other communities allow full house rental. I think that's the case.
So the owner.
Oh, right, it does say full house TGL allowed.
So the owner doesn't have to be there, right?
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah, yeah. We're the only one, yeah, we're the only one that restricts that. That's what caught people's attention in these other communities, they sort of like that feature.
Well, because, I mean, this is, you know, so we, I feel like we sort of have a belt-and-suspender's approach to this, you know? We didn't want to create, you know, a lot of the problems, we didn't want to have the noise and the strangers and all that stuff that people don't like. And so by having to have the owner there, you know, you're not going to, the owners are going to be much more careful with renting to people if they're going to suffer the consequences of somebody being noisy or disruptive.
Yeah.
Can I just kind of clarify real quick?
Sure.
It's, our code does distinguish between owner, and it actually allows an operator, is what it calls, it's operator and nonoperator. So you don't necessarily have to own the unit and live there, you just have to have a full-time operator onsite.
Yeah.
So that has happened a couple times, where someone, like, has, has a long-term tenant living there that takes care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they run out spaces of it.
Yeah.
So I think that that is kind of some of the confusion in communities, only reason why I pointed it out, is that it might not actually be the person who owns, owns it living there, but there should be someone there full-time, like the caretaker or a tenant.
Right.
Yeah. So what is interesting, and this is linked to some of the comments that, you know, I've seen floating around, is that we do, we, all things considered, we have a lot of TGLs in this town.
We do, we have proportionally.
Yeah.
Besides Peninsula, we have more than any other community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And from much bigger ones.
Yeah.
You know, I wanted to mention that I think that when you were asking about what are, what happens, what are the complaints that, I think Lisa Abel being at our meeting and telling us what has happened in her neighborhood.
Yeah.
That, because she has the ones that are grandfathered in.
Yeah.
And so it's a real, you know, she moved there wanting it to be, you know, permanent, know your neighbors, and it's very transient now. And I think that's one of the reasons that we looked at, we wanted to limit the number in neighborhoods so that we weren't having that happen. That was one reason.
Yeah, yeah.
We're also real concerned about loss of affordable housing.
Yes.
Although, as it turns out, by the nature of these TGLs being carved out, carved out for houses, perhaps only a limited number of them would be suitable for long-term rentals, you know, but yes, it's a waste of annual.
The ones that are accessory dwellings are, I have friends that have a, several apartments, they live in one and they run out the others, and they used to all be long-term leases, and now they're all, they're not.
Because they can make more money.
Yes, they make a lot more money.
Short-term.
Make a lot more money. And they actually said it can be, sometimes it can be easier, that, you know, if you have a long-term resident who's creating problems, it can be hard to get rid of them, and they can do a lot of damage. And they were finding that the transient guest lodging worked better, but the big thing was they made a lot more money.
Yeah.
And that was, I mean, that was actually in a rumor, but that was one of the reasons why we.
Yeah.
They put this in there was because they wanted villagers to be able to, you know, have some, you know, some additional income.
Yes.
Which obviously 40 people potentially have done.
And actually, in the last couple of years, as people have come here for approval, if I might, that's been the case of the ones that have actually come here the last couple of years. You know, typically, it's someone who's a senior, and they're looking for a little more income.
Yeah. So Gary, do you want to tell us then what you're, what you're suggesting that we do?
The one suggestion, I only have one suggestion. Well, the one suggestion, well, two suggestions, the one suggestion is like, most of it is like, I think, okay, because it's sort of achieving the goals that we set out to achieve. But then, and this is, I would suggest modifying. Right now, there's a requirement that you put in another one, it has to be 500 feet away, as the crow flies. But in, in my mind, that doesn't always define a neighborhood. If, just to use actual streets, because we know streets, you know, if you have one on, if you have one somewhere on, you know, Stafford, and someone wants to put another one on high streets, you got to, you know, go through the backyards and whatever you measure, it might be less than 500 feet, but it's not the same neighborhood, because you're going through people's backyards, or sometimes fences, or certainly lines of trees and whatever. I think, you know, that's not really clustering it.
So you're, so tell us what you're suggesting.
My suggestion is, is instead of making it 500 feet.
From property line.
From property, property line, that you change it, you keep it 500 feet, but you measure it along the roadway.
Along the roadway.
Because that's actually how people will travel from the one property to the other.
So my question, is that going to make them closer together then?
How do you define closer?
Well, by feet.
Well, they're closer by property line to property line, but I don't think that's, in my mind, the real goal was to not to cluster them like, like in a certain neighborhood. And if you have one here on this street, and you have one there on another street or two streets over, that's not clustering them. And already, I think mostly due to these sort of circumstances, the, you know, the variances have been granted for some that are less than 500 feet, for this very reason, that you, you got to turn left here, or then left there, you know, whatever, that they're really not.
Oh, there've been very many variances that people have gotten, do we know since?
I think we've done two.
Two total, since I've been here, the last two years, there's been one, and then I think there was one before that, so.
And why did you give them the variance?
Uh, one, because it was an elderly woman who, generationally, already raised one family, she had her grandkids, she needed the money to help save her house that she's had for many years here, and.
That was just like a year and a half ago, right?
Yeah.
On Northwoods?
But the bigger issue was exactly what Gary's talking about. The closer units were literally in a different neighborhood. One's along Fairfield Pike, and she's in Fair Acres. I mean, those are not even remotely the same neighborhood. So, I mean, it sort of goes to Gary's point in that case.
And what was the other one then?
That one's, that was a long time ago. Well, I can't really remember off the top of my head on that one.
Well, we just had one.
But it's along the same lines.
On White Men at BZA, remember? It's coming to the Planning Commission next month, potentially, it was supposed to be tonight, but we put, that was, I think it's 312 White Men, Jennifer Berman.
Yeah.
And Matt Mindy. And I think their reason was, the reason was, just because she's.
Economic pressure.
A longtime, like, resident of the village, who needs that additional income for, you know, to be able to live here.
And she was denied before? No, she's never applied?
No, yeah, I told her that she was within 500 feet of another one, so she couldn't submit, even submit the application, but she could submit a variance, asking for an exception, then she could submit to the Planning Commission if they approved the variance for 500 feet.
Okay.
Which they did.
And where's the next one? Is it also one of these, like, not, or is it on the same street?
I think it's like 200 feet away.
I think, I thought it was more. I thought it's all the way over on, like, Winter. But it's cutting through all these backyards.
Yeah, it is, it might be perceived as a different neighborhood, I don't know the neighborhood very well. I think Gary's suggestion would allow this one to be, to code, that example.
What if we got rid of the distance requirement altogether and had some other way of trying to assure that they weren't clustering? Because like, so, you know, Laura Curlis has a accessory building, she's got a thing, but then her neighbor has an accessory, you know, dwelling in it. And so this would basically preclude her from ever renting that out.
Well, she could rent it long-term.
Could rent it long-term, but she couldn't, she couldn't rent it short-term. And this is, you know, you're saying the economic opportunity is better for the short-term rentals. So it just, and in that case, I don't know that, you know, it's, her thing that she has is off the street, I don't know that it would change that neighborhood if she was renting, renting it out, you know?
I would prefer having something like what Gary is suggesting, or keeping what we have, and have people who have special circumstances to go to the BZA. Because I feel like, you know, we're seeing with Lisa Abel, what's happened in her neighborhood when there were no controls. It's like, you know, every house is a transient guest lodging. I don't want that to happen to other neighborhoods.
Okay, but now Lisa Abel is in, you know, she's practically in downtown, where.
She's not in downtown. She's, she's in a, in a neighborhood.
She's like a, she's like a block away from, you know, it's a denser, it's a denser part of town.
She's in an old neighborhood.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, a lot of these other ones are further away.
But just because they're in an older neighborhood doesn't mean that they still don't want to have their neighbors and have a community.
Someone just made a good point, like in the case you're mentioning. They could still apply for a variance.
Yes.
They can make a compelling case of why it's okay, and maybe even put a contingency on it, that you evaluated by some criteria and reevaluate in a year or two.
Yeah.
And if none of the neighbors are complaining at all, you continue, you know, but you do, you can do something somewhat creative, but through a variance, still.
I mean, what if we had something where, you know, because, you know, how many, once in a while, we do have people who chime in and don't want to have them, but a lot of times, it's just they just don't like them at all, it doesn't, like, they're liking too many of them. You know, what if that was part of the mechanism, that if, you know, if you were less than 500 feet, you know, and your neighbors weren't complaining, or your neighbors were supporting it, that it would be okay? I mean, we're concerned about whether the neighbors are going to be impacted.
I guess, I don't see.
Don't we want to ask the neighbors if they care?
I guess I don't see making, see, making a policy, because the one person, Laura Curlis, has an accessory dwelling, and she wants to make it transient guest lodging. I think that, I mean, I think it's rare that that has come up, and that we have a mechanism that if someone is closer, they can go to BZA, they can make their case.
And in this case, part of the compelling argument, if you go and take a poll, and every single person that lives within 500 feet supports it, that can be construed, construed as a compelling case to give it a try.
Stephen, am I understanding you correctly, because the process, the BZA process absolutely allows for neighbor input and folks to say, oh, I don't like it, or I do like it, for whatever reasons. Is there something?
No, I just, I just, I remember when we put the 500 feet thing in there, and, you know, and nobody else has these kinds of 500 feet. I'm not saying that this isn't, the intention isn't good, but I think that the 500 feet, you know, it's, it's, I think it's kind of a blunt instrument to try and get at what we're trying to achieve. You know, it's a, it's a, okay, it's easy to. You know, it's a, it's a, okay, it's easy to measure, but, you know, if two houses are together and they both have, you know, short-term transient lodging in them, is that really changing the neighborhood if the, you know, 100 houses around them don't have any? I mean, it's just the proximity of them to each other. And in some cases, the neighborhoods don't, you know, isn't like, you know, I don't know. I just, I just, I just don't, I'm just not convinced that 500 feet, or, you know, whether we're doing, you know, at an angle, or around the, you know, around the block, however, I just don't know that that's, you know, the most effective way of getting at what we're trying to do, which is to not be changing the character of the neighborhood.
It's a real simple way to do it. And I'll tell you, from the other communities I talked to, they all liked that.
But what about, wasn't there one that did like a percentage?
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple, that they have, they have districts.
So we'd have to create districts and say, just a percentage?
I think that's a lot more work.
But even then, you could have three adjacent houses in that district.
I think that this has worked well, and that we have the way to deal with if there are issues. But I also think, when you talk about other communities, we are so much smaller, yet we have so many more transient guest lodging than these other communities. And that is even with us putting these controls on it. And we put the controls on it because we saw what was happening. And I think that if we didn't have it, if we took away 500 feet, however we're measuring it, I think we'd have a lot more neighborhoods that end up being, you know, many more transient guest lodging.
Yeah. I think what you've got to remember too is, this sort of stuff, it actually, anything in the code, it's sort of dynamic. And I, like I've essentially said, what I feel is, for what the makeup of the community, the layout of the community right now, we have a pretty decent system. 20 years from now, a lot might be different. It seems like there's going to be a wave of new housing and this and that. And who knows what it's going to look like here in 20 years, and what people are going to want. But the code is dynamic. You, if, if circumstances are really different and people want it changed, you'll, you know, it'll get changed.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, that's why we brought it up, right? We're gonna, we check in on things. We know the community talks about it a lot. And so we thought, well, why don't we research it? And so that's.
Scott and Gavin, do you have things that you want to say?
Well, I'm not completely against the measuring by road. I mean, there might be the happenstance that, you know, you're around a corner, instead of going by property line to property line as the crow flies, yeah, you might have extra one within that 500 foot space. But if we went by the roadway, I'm not really against that idea. If that would, actually, that makes more sense, in a way. Because Gary's right about the, you know, there'd be a couple of yards or trees or something in between. And they're not going to be interacting with each other, I wouldn't think. If they're not, if the owners aren't already interacting with each other. But the transient guests, they're not going to want to interact. They want to go downtown or go to Chappelle's shows, or hopefully come up to the old Smokehouse, you know.
Gavin, do you have any thoughts?
Well, as you all know, I have, we have an Airbnb at my house, so I have, I mean, I have.
An Airbnb or a TGL? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a TGL.
A transient guest lodging.
The service, we use Airbnb, but yes.
Yeah.
And ours is a detached, you know, it's a, whatever, barn, garage. Accessory dwelling unit that was previous. So I think we've already been over my situation. But I, so I've thought about it a bunch. I don't, I don't see there being, I feel like it's healthy that we have something. Could I imagine it being something else? Yeah, I mean, this idea of like, the clustering, I can totally see that making sense. You know, I do think there is a dynamic. I mean, I've had neighbors who have basically been like, when are you going to give up your permit so I can get mine? You know? So it's like, there is like, uh, there's definitely, and then trying to figure out like, you know, how do you regulate that or not regulate that in a healthy way? So I'm, it's an interesting conversation. I don't feel like I have some obvious other way to think about it. It feels like we're generally in the right ballpark. I'm definitely would be open to the idea of figuring out how do you eliminate, so for instance, like, I live on East Limestone. If somebody was directly behind me on Glen Street right now, most of Glen would be off the table, right? But I don't know if I've ever met anybody, I mean, actually, I know a couple of them. But it's like, it feels like a completely different place.
Yeah, right.
Right? From like a.
So if we measured by the road, it would make that they could do it?
Yeah.
I just want to make another pitch for this thing, because so Lisa Abel's case, you know, she's living there where, she's right across from the jailhouse suite, where it's, it's one of the ones that was grandfathered in. Every one of these.
She's living on Winter Street.
But every one of these other ones that we're talking about, where the person is living there, I mean, most of these are owner occupied. So it isn't like we're losing neighborhoods. The neighbors are still there. They're just able to have, you know, a unit that they can rent out. So, you know, it isn't, I don't think that we're damaging the, you know, it isn't like you're, we're creating places where there aren't any neighbors. The neighbors are still there, because we have something that none of these other places have, which is that the owners or representative have to, have to be there. So that's the, you know, that's the thing that's really like, it makes it different. It controls, you know, the, much more closely who we're, you know, people are renting to, you know. And it's like what Gavin is saying, is like, you know, it's the, so, yeah, you could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but then they could also say no. So it's, you know, and I don't know that we're, you know, that, how bad would it be if you had two of them together? You're still going to have the people living there, because that's the thing that we have that's different than everybody else. So I don't think we're losing neighborhoods. I think we're just limiting the opportunity for other people in the village. And because we do have more, relatively speaking, there's obviously a demand for this. And I think that, you know, it would be good for other people in the village to be able to do this without having to say, oh, how many feet am I away from somebody else?
So here's, here's an idea.
Okay.
You said something that triggered a thought, that, but yeah, it might be okay. But you don't all of a sudden, you know, want the floodgates open, and then one house after another. But one possibility.
Just to make sense, one house after another, what? Has people staying over on the weekends? You could, every one of your neighbors could have somebody stay over on the weekend, but this would just be that they have somebody over that was, was paying to be there. I don't, I just don't, how, what, how different, how different is that?
It, 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 um.
Well, you know, I say, you and I, we may not be experiencing it. But I think we have to listen to people who have come to us that have it in their neighborhood, and how they feel about it. And Lisa Abel and Lynn Adams obviously feel that it is a negative for them in their neighborhood.
So I just had this thought, though, of conceivable compromise included in the code. Is, to begin with, I do like the modification that I proposed, you know, 500 feet by the, but then also allow one additional TGL within 500 feet, okay? That would allow, like the case you're describing earlier, that would allow a second one nearby an existing one, but just allow one. And if then a third person would want to then do a two, that'd be outside of the scope of that regulation. And you then would have to go for a variance, make a compelling reason why it'd be okay to add yet another one. But I'm just saying, that would be a mechanism to allow that, to crack the door a little bit.
I'm not hearing that everybody here feels that's needed.
Well, I'm not, I'm just pointing out.
Stephen does.
What would be a compromise approach?
Well, unless I, unless you're better at math than I am, which is entirely possible, I feel like you could get this like stepping stone effect, right? Because my TGL will be 200 feet from yours, so I'm, okay, I'm in, we're within 500 feet, but we're allowing two. Now there's another one, and it's 250 feet from me. So it's fewer than 500 feet from the first one, but less than, or a little. I just think that could create.
Yeah, I should just say like a loophole around the 500 feet, because they're on the other side, they don't want 200, yeah.
I like having that if there's an issue, that if there's somebody who wants to have it, and we, and they're too close, that they go to the BZA. And I think the BZA has done a good job.
And make a, make a policy case.
Yes. So I'm.
And by the way, we have had one, technically, we didn't turn them down, they had to withdraw.
Okay.
Because of, because of the owner occupancy. They could not verify if there's going to be anyone there 51% of the time.
Yeah. So are we ready, we, because we're not voting on this. This is simply, you're going to write it up and bring it back to us then? Because it text amendment, is that correct?
Oh, right, so.
Because we can't have a, we don't have public hearing on it or anything.
Correct. Tonight was just, if you want to make changes to it, and then I would bring back to the next meeting, a draft text. Hopefully sending it out a little bit before the meeting to you to review.
Sure.
If we got more complaints. But the other, there's going to be other text amendments, so I was imagining, I would kind of try to get it to you guys early, the drafts, and see if you had changes. Because we're allowed to do that with legislation.
Certainly.
Yeah.
I would, however, I mean, it's a great discussion. I don't know that everyone's agreed as to what they want to see.
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
So if one of you could, you don't even have to vote on it, but if someone could make a proposal as to what they'd like Meg to be writing up, and then you can vote if necessary, discuss if necessary, but.
Yeah. Well, then I would like to say that we have it at the 500 feet spacing restriction is measured on the street instead of from property line to property line.
So that's your motion to bring back?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Other agreement?
All in favor?
Yeah.
I do.
All in favor?
That's fine, yeah.
Anyone opposed?
I don't like it.
Okay. So for an agreement, one opposed.
Just so I'm clear, you're not a no because, because that's, it's a, you would like to go further.
Yes.
Meaning you, you would rather that than the way it is now, but you would like to go further than that?
You'd like to eliminate the limit.
I, yeah, I just don't, I don't, I see the 500 feet thing as being redundant to the owner.
Operator occupied.
Operator occupied, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I think we need to go, because of time and everything, we need to move on to what Meg has proposed, status of proposed zoning code amendment.
Yeah, so zoning amendments, discussion came up at the last Planning Commission meeting. And I said there was, you know, I had a list that I've been printing out the last two years of things that needed to be kind of updated in the zoning code. And so I went back and talked to Johnny a little bit to, about kind of scheduling some of these in and with other efforts that are going on at the village. And came up with a short list, short-ish, and I guess it's short for to come back in September. And so I'll just highlight some of those, just really high level for you guys. Some of them are pretty, going to be pretty, I think, simple. The first one is adding a requirement, it's actually not in the zoning code, it's in the sewer and sewer, sanitary sewer section of the code, require a backflow preventer for new, new sewer line connections or significant modifications to existing sewer line connections. We don't have that requirement in our code, so we want to add that. That is about, Johnny told me about a $200 in cost, additional cost it would be on the developer, builder, homeowner. Subdivision regulations, I was proposing that we remove requirements for paper copies right now.
And what would that mean for us?
Backflow preventers? Back for that one? Okay.
That no paper copies?
Oh, yeah, so right now, the subdivision section of our code requires 10 full-size copies of the whole subdivision, so, and which are those really big rolled plans. And I still want to get like one paper copy probably, but we're required to keep one on file in the record. But, and I can make copies for you guys of like the important sheets or whatever, but I don't need the whole construction set, 10 copies of. And then I have to go through like a records discussion, destruction process with the clerk, potentially, because we're not allowed to get rid of, I can't just get rid of it because of the way the law is. So I have 10 huge paper copies. I paper that, and I don't even really use the paper anyways.
You want to remove the requirement for 10 and make it one copy? So you're not going to remove it completely for paper copies, except one copy?
Right. And then, yeah.
Can I throw out a suggestion? I'm just thinking about going through every one of these bullets.
Oh, sure.
Could we do like, what do people have questions about?
Oh, sure.
Or any of them that seem like they are potentially, like, that just seems so like, obviously, we should have less paper.
Okay, well, the next one, yeah, I'll skip that one. The minor subdivision and replat is a section of our code that is unique to the village, but I really like it. It is something that I think Denise put a lot of work into when she was here. But our, we have a utility review process that we require every, like, new minor subdivision or replat to get reviewed utilities, mainly for issues with like, utility lines crossing multiple properties and maybe needing to be relocated, or what, especially for these minor subdivisions, because it's when people are subdividing like a larger parcel into three lots, or they can do it at the staff level. I just want to clarify the utility process in there. Right now, it's in the definition section, the actual process requirement, and so it gets missed. And so I just want it to be in the actual section related to that requirement, so people are aware of it and staff remembers in the future after I had not here. Site plan review, chapter 1268, this also has some paper references. And then we also require things like, provide the zoning designation. I don't need them to provide me the zoning designation. I have, know what the zoning designation is, so that'll be minor. Most of the stuff in here, I'm viewing as somewhat minor, not like a policy level decision, because that would require maybe some more input from the council in advance, or from the community. I'm hoping that's the intent. So if it ends up not that way, then maybe we can pivot. But the definitions, we don't really clearly define what solar is. We have some like major missing definitions for like, some of the uses that we have common, we don't define, which makes it hard when people are asking questions on what it is and what the difference is between this and that. Flood administrator is one of them. But we actually realized, Brian pointed out when we did the overlay update, removed the gateway overlay, that we don't really have, we don't designate who the flood administrator is, and it's the village manager, and we just need to put that in. Rooftop solar, we've been interpreting our code a certain way, but it's not, it's not actually in the code that way. So we, we see lots of rooftop solar around.
So we want to make it a permitted use?
Yes, and just have it be clear what it is in the code, so that if people are asking about it, they know what to do, what the process is. They know it's permitted.
Sure.
So it's right there, and it's clear. And then same with the attached single-family dwellings. We have a way that we've been applying setbacks, where we consider, like, say if there's a five-plex, and it's on one lot, we measure the setback line for all five off of the primary parcel on the outside versus, we don't require them to lot out each unit separately. So I just want to clarify that on setbacks, and it'll probably just be a footnote. And then I think the bigger one is the traffic impact study requirement. I've, just something that Johnny's asked that we put in, and basically have a threshold of, this many vehicle trips requires a traffic impact study, so it's black and white in our code. So people know if they're creating this many trips, that they're going to have to, like a developer knows, they're going to have to do a traffic study.
So this is related to development? So you're saying so many trips, what does that mean?
Yeah, so vehicle trips. So I did some research on this too. I looked, just looked like at Zena and Green County, and a couple other close by, to see if they had what their triggers was, I think Bellbrook, Hubert Heights, just somewhere around here. So some will say, they're all, they vary, it's very vastly different. Some say with the subdivision, you have to do a traffic study if it has more than 20 lots. And then, I could actually put the, have us put together the research and share it with you guys too, if you want in advance. But like Zena, they require a traffic study when it's more than 60 vehicle trips per peak hour, PM peak hour. So like at 6:00 PM is usually it. And so there's like a traffic manual, ITE engineers' traffic manual, that tells you like, let's say it's multi-family, creates .75 vehicle trips during peak hour. So you take that and you multiply it by the number of trips, the number of units they're proposing, and you get like a PM peak. And then if it's over our, our threshold, they have to do a traffic study.
Okay.
And then the traffic, we're thinking right now that it would be a traffic study per Green County standards, but Green County has higher, I think they say 200 vehicle trips. And then you're required to have one. So that, that would be the policy somewhat decision of.
How much, sorry, how much does it cost to do a traffic study?
I think it depends on what's, what we require in the traffic study.
Yeah, so it's like the scope is a big deal, right?
It is a huge deal, yeah.
I mean, I'll. I mean, I'll say I'm generally supportive of having some threshold. Because it seems like, we obviously know this with the Windsor projects, like you get to some threshold and it's just obviously going to be a question. So why not just name it upfront? But the scope of what is, does traffic include parking? Does parking include, you know?
Bike lanes, yeah.
What's, because it's the inputs, the assumptions that you're making that are the tricky part. This is also where, meaning, you know, are you assuming based on current use? Or are you assuming based on within projects in development in five years? And who gets to decide what is a project in development? And there's a bunch of different questions there.
And then like the, like Zina has adopted in their code all of that criteria. So.
I like expanding it to include the things that Gavin mentioned, like parking.
And I was, what I was imagining was giving you guys a draft of the codes that you could look at it and tell me if you think it's including anything, everything. I kind of worked on a draft already and it has, I added bike to it.
And I, I would generally be inclined to have it be either we do it or we pay for a third party. The part where the developer pays for the traffic study always feels weird to me. Because it feels like, you know what it's like when you call, you're calling a contractor to get something done. The more likelihood is that you're going to get, you're going to tell them what you want to have happen. So I like the idea of us doing traffic studies. That way there's just a, hey, you're going to do this thing, we do it, and then they pay for it.
Okay, I was going to say.
Well, that, as long as they pay.
As long as they pay for it, then okay.
That's the thing I'd be concerned about.
But that's why I start with how much it costs. Because if it's, if this is some big onerous cost, it's very different than if it's.
I could ask Choice One, our engineers, like how much it would be for them to do them for us. And then maybe we could just say you pay a traffic impact study fee.
Sure.
And then we hire, we use that fee to pay for the traffic study.
Yes.
There's only a handful of places that actually do these studies, so.
Because they're our engineer, Choice One, I mean, so it would make sense if we're going to trust anyone. But they would also be the ones reviewing anything submitted to us.
So then maybe you do a third party. Anyway, you get what I'm saying. The point is somehow or another.
That if they're persons contracting it for themselves, they're less likely to, they're going to get the result they want. I'm paying you, I want to be able to do this.
Yeah, I would certainly try. It shows that such and such is the case.
I don't agree with these numbers, you're fired.
Okay, so we have that for traffic study.
Okay, yeah, so just start thinking about that. And I'll try to get like a draft out, like I said, a little bit early of what I was thinking, what we're thinking.
Yeah, that'd be good.
There's a couple of different options. We could also just reference Green County. It's got, we talked to Choice One about it and they said that's what a lot of villages do. And I said, well, we're a little bit different because we're, we're a village, but we have a lot of tourists and, you know, we're a little bit more of a city because we have a lot of downtown.
And I think because we are smaller, that with the larger communities, it's probably a larger number that triggers it. Since we're smaller, I think it should be a smaller number because it's going to have an impact on us.
Yeah.
So this thing, this trigger based on the number of vehicle trips, it almost sounds like you need a traffic study to decide whether you need a traffic study. Is that?
I asked that question.
Is that where the money is?
So no, they, they said that basically, yes, we will, they'll have to do a traffic study. Like if, if I think they're close, that they're giving me numbers like it's only going to be, you know, let's say we require 50 vehicle trips during PM and it's a traffic study. They say, no, it's not. And I'd like, there's no way that's accurate. Yes, they're going to have to show to me and do a study to show me how that's not correct.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Obviously, that sounds like the standard way of doing it, but like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It would be reasonable, I mean, if you're saying that it is, it is a math equation. It is X units.
Yeah.
Per.
Yeah, single-family has like, I think one.
And then if you chose to go, say, you know, it's the 50s the threshold, and you chose to figure out how to get to 49, well, you'd also be capping what you would get approval for at that point. So you couldn't mess with the math too much without then having an impact.
Yeah.
If I'm understanding correctly, yeah.
Right.
So just going bigger picture, it seems like the items in the potential code amendments feel relatively, they feel doable. They feel like these are things, it doesn't sound like there's any, I just want a name for everybody. The stuff that is in the proposed after strategic planning is the more complex stuff.
Yeah.
So that's the last meeting or two meetings ago, like some of the follow-up from the growth session, the follow-up from the, you know, conversations that have come up from the Windsor developments. So just naming that, like what I'm hearing, I didn't know what you were going to come back with, Meg, but what I'm, what I, and tell me if I'm mischaracterizing it, what I hear you coming back with is most of the stuff feels like pretty small, pretty agreeable, we do now. The stuff that might have some debate will do after a process that we don't have any timeline or process for currently. So just so everybody has awareness that that's the current reality, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I don't have a timeframe for the strategic planning process. But I do think that the intent was that that be done before we, we dive into figuring out how we're going to, what residential unit types we want besides a single-family.
And so this is getting into the category of like, it makes me nervous. Where we've been kicking this can and I just, I'm nervous about how long we're going to kick it, basically. And so it's like, I totally want to be reasonable and flexible, you know, as a planning commission member and as a council member, that if we're gonna figure out our big picture direction, I'd love to do that first. But we've been talking about doing that for a long time and in the process, deals come up. And then the lack of having clarity of what we want matters. So I, I'm just naming that I'm of two minds. A part of me is like, okay, I get it, that's totally what makes sense time-wise, or, you know, from a process standpoint-wise. But I am just naming that, it makes me a little nervous. And so I'm somewhat like, I don't know, I kind of feel like we should push to do it anyway.
When it comes to mine, that I think will be a challenge, you know, talking about traffic impact or whatever. And reading ahead, I can see the same thing will happen in any discussion about density maximum. It's like, how do you decide what's okay? You know, there's, it's, they're very subjective items. What's too much traffic?
Hey, this is why you guys are hired though, right? You guys are getting paid the big bucks because it's up to you to make this.
Yeah, we get the big bucks.
We got big bucks?
Yeah.
So I think part of the thing with the PUD stuff though, is that that's, it's like, that whole process is so confusing. You need to meet these, three of these five and that kind of whole thing. I think that, that it would almost be better to start by rewriting that into something simpler so that we can actually understand it and then decide whether we agree with it once we understand what it's wanting us to do.
Well, you want to help me with the plan of context for that?
I could work on that.
Yeah.
Because I've gone through this thing, you know, so many times and it's like, it's, I remember, you know, we, it's always been a challenge when we come up with a PUD, how, you know?
Oh, I know.
We got a plan, then we got to vote on all these little pieces.
I just imagine the public that doesn't even, I mean, that's what's the part that's so frustrating is, I mean, for me, like I want everyone to understand what we're doing, you know, and be able to weigh in and actually, you know, be on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd be able to help with something like that too.
So we, we could like pass around a draft of something to clarify.
Sure.
That'd be great, Stephen. Oh my gosh, I'm excited.
Because in fact, I think that we saw that some of the things in those lists weren't always applicable for the Windsor, when it came up.
That was the big, and, well, you see on here some of the notes I have, that the mixed-use component of the PUD, it is really crafted, I think, more for residential.
Yeah.
PUDs, it doesn't really allow for much flexibility with commercial. Like I run into challenges a lot with Alice at Millworks.
Yeah.
We almost need two, one for commercial and one for residential.
They have those, they have those.
I think we should have because they're, they're not alike.
But I do like, but I do like them being able to be blended together too, like residential and commercial. I think that's important. I think that's a lot of what our character is. Like our downtown, we recently did a building inventory. There's, there's, how many residential units do you think in our downtown? 40.
Wow.
Yeah, here's part with the mill and everything.
40, we counted them all.
Wow.
And went and talked to everyone.
What's 40?
Residential units in downtown, like on Zina, the B1 zone, basically.
That's pretty cool.
So it's not, it's in line with the character of our community already to continue to support that type of.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
So many of these downtown businesses have second-floor apartments.
Yes.
That's probably some of what you're.
A lot of what it, yeah.
Something that may or may not be helpful, this is from training I did earlier this year.
So I'm having him make sure it was 40. I'm pretty sure it was, it sounds like so much.
There's, you know, Green County has a planning organization, you know, who put on the training.
Oh, yeah, the Green County.
And they, they might be able to help with some of this. Because one of the interesting things that I learned was, you know, PUDs are really a big player in a lot of communities.
Yes.
I don't know where, but I think there's some in Green County.
Well, I don't think I'm saying I need help necessarily. It's not that I need help, it's just that I'm trying to, well, it is nice to have someone else looking at it because, but at the same time, I wanted to stay in line with the strategic planning effort and process because I think it plays into also the broader discussions of financial capacity for sewer and water. And that's tied into the land and the zoning, the way you zone properties too. Because that's the number of density that you can get, then that equals the number of sewer taps you need. And that's the sewer flow, it all ties together.
Well, and to put it into value perspective, it's like, it goes back to the same kind of things we were talking about with the TGLs. It's like, do we want to be a community that is growing? And if so, how big and to what end?
Yeah.
Is it because we have a revenue problem and so we're not going to be able to maintain our utilities? Or is it because we want more neighbors? Those are two totally different approaches. Or do we not want any more neighbors? Which is what we've been doing functionally by not allowing things to happen. So there's a series of decisions about, from a value perspective, that would inform which kinds of, you know, which kinds of, so for instance, on the TGL side, one thing I thought of that we didn't bring up is the economic development component. Where it's like, do we think that more people coming to town is good? Well, that's opening up this whole can of worms of how do we navigate tourism versus focus on locals in our economy and in our daily life? That would, that's the kind of thing that hopefully we'll talk about in strategic planning.
And this, I think we need to come back to, what we're talking about is the PUD.
Yeah.
That we're not talking about.
Yeah, and I'm trying to bring this stuff up so that everybody's aware that if we just do the PUD piece, there are a bunch of other pieces that we've brought up that we're not addressing.
But it is not something that planning has been asked to have anything to do with. This PUD is the only thing.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that's where there's like this kind of give and take of like, I think, I think there's some room here that we have not mined this, we haven't talked about this at council. Meaning there are some of these areas that we've been assuming, oh, that'll get talked about in strategic planning or that I've talked about in, at council at some point, but we haven't done that. So I think there are some of these areas that we could still bring back up with council. I would throw out, just maybe this is a halfway point. In the village goals right now, the idea is that we're going to have a plan for strategic planning by the end of the year. That's a current sort of codified village goal for this year. So I guess I would throw out like, let's check back in about this at the latest. I just don't want to kick this forever, is my point. I would like it to all work in time, but I think we should check back in about it at our December meeting. If we haven't heard any updates, then I think we should talk about.
Talk about what? Talk about the PUD?
Talk about density maxes, talk about how we want to think about growth. There are a series of questions that right now no one is talking about.
Well, and we, and we had actually talked about that. And then you said it was something that the council was going to deal with.
That's not, we've, we've talked about this. That's not, that, I don't think that's an accurate representation. What I said is, is that I would like for us to talk about these things. I have tried to bring them up with council. I'm the person saying, I really want to talk about it. And I'm sitting here saying that if in that chair, we don't talk about it, then let's talk about it here.
So would you, so by us talking about it here, it could spur the, with council.
Exactly, there's a, there's an interrelationship.
They may feel like, we may give them some ideas.
That's right.
Or they may, they may be jealous of all our good donations.
I'm sure they're jealous.
Yeah.
Well, we might as well do that in December after the election because it's going to be a different council.
That's going to be the dynamic. There'll be a new council and there will be also.
That's true, we'll have a new council, so there may be.
Yeah, and we'll have more clarity from staff at that point, right?
So with the PUD, I did have one thing that I wanted to add because I'm looking towards some new council members. I would like to have a requirement, we've talked about this, for 15% affordable housing.
In the PUD.
In the PUD, we've been talking about, you know, we were really fortunate with Windsor that that happened. And that, and I would like to have it with the PUD that that's a requirement.
That is a.
I like that.
It's a, it's an option.
No, it's, it's one of those options, but they can, don't have to do it.
Okay, yeah.
And I would like it to be a requirement.
So if we're going to go there, I would like us to talk about what affordable means and to have AMI.
80% of the AMI.
Yeah, and I think we, I would like to figure out a way to have better than just 80% of AMI and some relationship of the size of the units. So right now, my concern is, is that on a deal like the Windsor project, that I think they were going to have, you know, 15 units that were going to be lower, that were going to be available to 80% of AMI already. Now, this, this caps it so they have to, that's real. But to me, to get to affordability, I would like to have something around maybe 40, 60% so that there's some other units, because that's the area right now we're making no headway on, is.
So this could be just for rental, what would you do?
Oh, no, for homeownership too.
Well, yeah.
For any, for PUD.
And see, this is why I think, yeah, we need to.
Yeah.
We need to have a discussion. And for that matter, you don't want to just limit it to PUDs. You want it for any development above a certain size.
Well, I, I agree, but Gavin has said that there is not the will on the council for that. But we have been talking about it for the PUD, so I would like to get it in there. And maybe when the council changes, we're going to have the will there, but.
Let's start with that, let's just start with the 15% requirement, just see if that works and like, then we got more time to work on it. And.
You know, what you can do is, is some communities do a little more complex. They say 15%, and then of that 15%, 5% are 0 to 50% of the AMI. And then 10% are above it. And that would be one way.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Right.
Okay.
So Stephen, are you still going to work on it a little bit?
Yes, yes.
I think, okay. Whether or not, I think it'd be worthwhile.
I'll send you an email and ask them to get me the sections that we go through when we review a PUD request. And I would love to, I'm, nothing I like better than a good procedure.
Yeah, maybe like, we, because we won't bring forward a draft in September, but, I mean, we won't bring forward like an actual official ordinance. Because the, the ones above that are under the, coming in December, those are going to be ordinances in September. But your draft, you can bring it there, we could talk about it or something or another meeting if you're not done with it. Okay.
Yep, that'd be great.
Does, I don't think I heard anybody disagree. Would it, can we put it on like, I know we don't have the equivalent of future agenda, but for December to check back in?
Sure, we can have that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, and then the last thing you had were proposed code amendments still under internal consideration. Do you want to talk about any of those or just there?
No, I don't think we need to, yeah.
Okay.
They're not like super important, really.
Okay, so do we, I guess that we have pretty much covered our business for tonight. Agenda planning.
Someone in the public.
We already had our public comments section.
Yes, I got here at 3:00 after 6:00 and I, and I realized that after quite a long time. And I just wanted to see the subject of the TGLs. I guess for three minutes, is that possible? I mean, I was here at 3:00, I looked at your.
She's at mine.
Go ahead.
I think that's a lot of time.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
State your name and address.
I'm Kathy Allison, I went at 2:14 last day.
Do you have to swear in?
And I think that.
You're not, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
I appreciate the work that you've done on studying the TGLs and these comparisons. And I agree with what I heard member Stiles say, that proportionately, we are far above all of the comparisons in the number of TGLs for our population. And I live in walkability phase one, and that is a very popular place for people to have TGLs. And it's hard for me to believe that there's people living in a lot of the homes that I see all the, even 51% of the time. I didn't know that rule. But I, my concern is about the proportion. And it's about housing for our residents. But I, my concern is about the proportion, and it's about housing for our residents, and it's about tourism versus residents. And that is my concern, that there's a lot more, there's a lot more things being done for the tourists that are hurting the lives of the residents. And I'm particularly, this, me and my husband Dale were talking about this with your proposal, Gary, and I was wondering, is that going to be like 500 feet? What it is now, would say my backdoor neighbor on Whitman, that my, that the, that I back up to, would not be able to have a TGL if I did, or vice versa. But if we go by the road, then that would be possible. So I think it's great potential that we're going to get doubling or tripling of TGLs if we just, and I was hoping you wouldn't vote on that tonight, without more public input. Because I find generally that the people in town are very concerned about this local and nationwide trend of TGLs gutting communities. People don't like that choice of word, but it, that's what the main complaint is. And it's about having community members that are staffing this commission and village council and everything else within our, our village. And it's not about just making money. And a lot of people don't have money to buy a second home, or to be able to add on and do this. And those are the people that I thought this was all supposed to help in the first place, and I feel like it's helping very few of those type of people, and instead feeding into people making a lot more money. And these people may not have anything invested in our community, except this one, whether this operator or non-oper, how many operators actually live in Yell Springs? I'd like to know that.
And that is three minutes?
And that's it? Wow, that was quick. Well, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Vote that into anything, it's just a good...
Okay, so then looking at agenda planning.